Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Let's please call the roll and establish a quorum.
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, Mayor Steinberg, and for the record, Vice Mayor Hanson will be absent this evening.
I understand. Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise, and we'll ask Councilmember Harris to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. We're going to begin tonight with a special presentation recognizing Arbor Day. I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Harris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, Sacramento is regarded as the city of trees, and there's a good reason for that. Our urban forest is amongst the top 10 in the nation. And there's a reason for that. It's because a lot of people in Sacramento recognize that we would be one giant heat island if we didn't have a robust canopy. So a lot of people work to protect that, most notably our urban forestry department and the Sacramento Tree Foundation. And now, of course, many volunteer groups work to plant trees in their neighborhoods. And it's our goal to plant numerous trees in the near future so that we can guard against the effects of climate change and heating in our city. So Arbor Day happens once a year, and I'm just going to read a couple of clauses off of this resolution. Whereas the city of Sacramento, the Sacramento Tree Foundation, and the Sacramento Municipal Utility District have a unique model partnership that provides tree planting, energy conservation, and stewardship of our urban forest. The urban forest of Sacramento has been recognized by American Forest as one of the top 10 urban forests in the nation. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council that the city of Sacramento and the city of Sacramento, we hereby recognize the achievements of the city's urban forestry division and the Sacramento Tree Foundation and recognize April 27, 2018 as Arbor Day and encourage all residents and visitors to join together to celebrate this day to plant, protect, and preserve our trees for future generations. So I'd like to have Ray Tretheway of the Tree Foundation and Jody Carlson from Forestry come up and say a few words, and then I'll come down and present you with the reso.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am one of your city arborists, Jody Carlson. The city of Sacramento has had a commitment to caring for trees since before the first Arbor Day in 1872. This commitment has garnered worldwide recognition for our beautiful tree canopy. Arbor Day is a holiday that encourages everyone's participation, and the Sacramento Tree Foundation exemplifies this by inspiring its volunteers at tree planting projects in all areas of the city. For Arbor Day this year, Sacramento's Urban Forestry Section joined the Sacramento Tree Foundation to plant trees at John Sloate Elementary School. Urban Forestry takes pride in its partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and looks forward to further enhancing the city's tree canopy together.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy Arbor Day. You're in great, great company here. Your colleagues before you for over four decades have invested like you are in our tree canopy and our volunteers and a professional tree service, your urban forest services. Outstanding, it's so outstanding that MIT just did a study of your trees in 23 other cities across the world. And in the United States, you have more trees per street mile than any other city in the United States and third in the world after Singapore and I believe some other city, Amsterdam or somewhere. But that's a true investment in the public realm that makes a difference every day to the quality of life and the health of our residents and our businesses. So congratulations, and also you will be receiving the Tree City USA Award from the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 41st year in a row. You're the first city in the state of California, and you've done it for 41 consecutive years. Congratulations to all of you to carry on this legacy.
Forty-one streak.
Yeah. Real quickly, I'll pass out just a couple things, if I may. For Harris, tomorrow night, we have a grant, the premiere of a documentary on Sacramento's urban forest. It's at the Crest Theater, it's free, and we have over 1,000 reservations. It holds just under 1,000, so come early, please. And it starts at 6 o'clock at the Crest Theater tomorrow. And then on Sunday, in partnership with the city of Sacramento, we have a grand opening of our urban wood rescue program out at Depot Park where some of the trees come from city streets and city parks that are dead and dying, and we repurpose those trees so they store the carbon and they beautify somebody's home with a table or a bench and stuff. We often called, it's often referred to as wood from the hood. So congratulations and happy Arbor Day.
Couple of great events coming forward.
So just a brief comment. You know, we have a lot of volunteers who now plant trees in the city in conjunction with SMUDD and the Tree Foundation. For instance, in South Matomas, we have the South Matomas Urban Greening Program. Our goal is to plant 1,000 trees in the next couple of years with the help of the Tree Foundation and volunteers paid for by the tree mitigation clause that we put in our tree ordinance. So it's paying dividends, we're getting trees planted in Sacramento. I'd just like to get a quick picture with you if I could.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to make a comment while he's walking down there because my predecessor was particularly good at making sure we had a tree canopy, Councilmember Tretheway. So thank you so much for everything you have done for the city of Sacramento to make sure that we would receive that Arbor Award for the long term. It is a phenomenal part of getting to be in our city, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Great stuff, Ray Tretheway. Thank you, as always. One of the great sources of pride in our city, our beautiful tree canopy, which we can never take for granted. We have to keep preserving it and growing it. Very good. Let's do the second presentation, which is the Fight the Bite Mosquito Control Services Report. Ms. Capi, are you presenting on this?
I am not. We have mosquito vector control district here.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager for the Sacramento-Yolo mosquito vector control district and getting the presentation queued up here. There we go.
Go, go.
So we cover all of Sacramento and Yolo County, which is actually 2,000 square miles, with a very diverse geography. Here in Sacramento, you have about 1.4 million people, and then right on the other side of the river, we have quite a bit of agriculture. And we also cover Davis Woodland winters, so these small pockets of population surrounded by agriculture that produce a tremendous amount of mosquitoes. So we have quite a bit of a challenge to try to help control that and specifically to try to help control some of the disease. So some of the mosquito habitat that we look for are very easy to spot. You're looking at wetlands, rice fields, irrigation ditches, something that you can drive over the causeway and see very easily where these mosquitoes might be breeding. Anywhere where there's standing water and growth vegetation, having that interface is a perfect habitat for mosquito breeding. But some of the things that are a little bit more difficult to find are these backyard sources. And specifically after the recent rains that we've had here in the springtime, anything that can hold water will hold water. So you're looking at your backyard buckets, any tires, any flower pots, any of those other things that in your own yard will hold water will also breed mosquitoes. And these are obviously very difficult for us to find because we can't see into your backyard. So we really rely on the residents to be able to try to identify when they're seeing problems with mosquitoes and to give us a call so that we can come out and try to help address the issue. So we use what we call integrated mosquito management measures. The first one is public information. We do a lot of public events, fairs, neighborhood groups, do a lot of advertising, radio, television, to try to make sure that people are aware of what the risks are associated with mosquitoes and the diseases that they carry. Then our surveillance program.
I'm going to interrupt. We got a lot of business. How many slides do you have?
There's like 11. I'm halfway done.
You are halfway done?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So surveillance program where we trap mosquitoes and test for virus activity, our mosquito fish program, which is free of charge, and then physical control and larval control and adult, including airplane, applications. So our biggest concern here is West Nile virus is the most prevalent disease in the United States, permanently established here and is not going to be going away. But there are other diseases that can be carried by mosquitoes as well. This just tells you how many cases of West Nile confirmed cases that we had last year in California. It's 536, but really those are an underestimation of the number of cases. Their CDC estimates that for every reported case, there's another 30 to 70 cases that go unreported, undiagnosed. So you're really talking about tens of thousands of people in California that are afflicted with West Nile virus in some form or another. Here's just a brief slide as to how many West Nile virus activity sites, locations that we had within the city of Sacramento, so you can see quite a big cluster of both dead birds and mosquito samples. The one thing we are also concerned about are invasive mosquitoes. These are new mosquitoes to our area that are, can be very efficient vectors of exotic diseases like Zika, Dengue, and Chikungunya, which we've had outbreaks in. So what do we ask the residents to do? We ask them to follow the 70s. The first one is drain any standing water around your property, making sure you're not breeding mosquitoes on your own property. Dawn and dusk are times to avoid being outdoors. That's when mosquitoes are most active and they're looking to bite at that time. If you do have to go out dressed in long sleeves and pants when outside, if you can't do that, defend yourself with a repellent. I put on each of your tables there a box of repellent. We buy this stuff by the pallet. We hand it out for free. We want it to be used. So please give us a call if you have your neighborhood movies in the park or concerts in the park, anything where your residents are going to be out in the evening, give us a call. Be more than happy to provide it free of charge. Doors and screens, when we open up the windows in the summertime, we want to get that cool delta breeze. Mosquitoes are very small, they'll find their way in, make sure your doors are in good working order. And then, of course, call the district if you have, if you see mosquitoes, know of a backyard pool that's not, that is not being maintained or have any questions for us. So you can get more information at our website at fightthebite.net or call our phone number 1-800-429-1022. With that, if the council has any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Well, thank you. It's actually a very important public health.
Absolutely.
Message and worth the time here. How many people in the Sacramento region get sick or die every year as a result of bites?
The last couple of years, we've had, we've had lower numbers. Last year in Sacramento County, we had six confirmed cases, but again, that's a significant underestimation. The year before that, we had about 28, including two deaths. Our highest number that we've ever had was when it was first introduced back in 2004. We had nearly 200 cases with over 20 deaths from West Nile. So we want to make sure that people are aware and take the appropriate precautions to try to help prevent yourself from getting sick by being, not being bitten by mosquitoes.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Very much. We appreciate it. Okay. I think what we're going to do now, and we have a lot of staff, and I think we're going to take the consent calendar next and ask whether members have any items that they want pulled off the consent calendar.
Councilmember Warren wanted to speak on item seven but not pull it from the consent calendar.
Okay, well, we got a motion on the entire consent calendar by Councilmember Guetta, second by Councilmember Harris. Is there any public testimony on the consent calendar, Ms. Capi?
I have two speakers on the consent calendar, Ron Elmsley and Mac Worthy.
Mr. Elmsley, come on up.
And after Mr. Elmsley is Mac Worthy.
You have two minutes, sir.
When they put in the water meters down my alley.
What item are you speaking on, sir?
Oh, number 10. They, they cut into a six-inch concrete and they patched it with three inches of concrete around the meter. So I think this is kind of tacky. The inspector didn't care. The only one he put the full six inches was my meter. Everyone else, it was two, maybe three. This department has had one of the most unsavory things like, you know, the people doing one another on government time and tooting coke and stuff like that. So I don't think that you should speed up anything because this department has a very poor, a very hard time of keeping, keeping things in order. So just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmsley.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, and the final speaker on the consent calendar is Felix Lamb.
Good afternoon, people.
What item, Mr. Worthy?
On the 14. Now Jay just took some money to buy a building, now you come back and say we want some money for the park to redo some bad spots in the park. That's pimping. I don't care what you say, that's pimping. Get the money and move it over there and move it over there and say, well, you helping, you're pimping the people. Now the situation of Cedar Program, what are they training for, dear? No matter the name of the position, you're training the people and nobody said what position you're going to train them for. That's taxpayers' money. That should be records of what you're going to train them. I don't know. And then you go on and say the state and federal government platform, respect the Constitution, and that's all you got to do. The federal government will take care of the other. That's all you got to do here at this level, respect the Constitution and quit aligning to the public.
Can I say something? Yes, we have Councilmember Chenier and then-
Sir, Mr. Worthy, I have not taken any money. Bond funds were transferred into a trust that Sierra Health Foundation is holding for the community. So I just want to be clear, if you're going to criticize me, at least get it right.
Talking to me or you making comments?
No, he's responding. He got the, you got to speak, he responded. Next, Councilmember Warren on item seven. Council-
Do you want me to call the next speaker?
We do have another, yes.
Felix Lamb on item number three, and I'd like to read into the record, item three will be continued to May 8th. Is Felix here? It's your turn to speak.
Can I come through?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then after Felix is Will Candy, Kennedy?
Will Kennedy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmember. I'm here just like ask some question and some help from the city of Sacramento. Our investor group have purchased property in 1001 El Paso, Baloa, and right now, you know, it become this special zoning, so the conformation cannot be, cannot operate there. So I just have a question. We have submit application with the city, and we have a lawyer and our group to do the research before we submit to application for let's get the license, cannot be cultivation. So right now, you know, we, I already talked to connect Warren office and try to work with the councilman in that district, you know, try to help to process, to speed up the application for that license. We submit the license last year, I believe on June 30th, 2017, but I don't know why it kind of slow down. So I asked the city of Sacramento and the councilman office to help me to get the license and our group here, you know, to be try to work with the city to improve the area, to bring job, redo the farm, you know, to work with the community, create job.
Mr. Lou, would you, Mr. Warren, will you meet the gentleman?
We're going to try to-
You're going to try to help, okay?
And also we, those three, I've been submit before, and I want to kind of do something about it. Because, you know, we have located a different location, we have to submit the application.
Okay.
Or other application still-
Mr. Lamb, you have two minutes, Senator. Will you make your final comment?
Yeah, now continue.
We'll work with you, Mr. Lou.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. Good to see you, Felix.
And our last speaker is Will Kennedy on item 14.
Kennedy, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Will Kennedy, and I'm here tonight to speak on, of course, item 14, specifically the proposal to create a capital project to fund a community garden in Sojourner Truth Park. Over the last three and a half years, I've had the pleasure of leading the efforts to establish the first Pocket Greenhaven Community Garden. Over the span of a dozen meetings, our group met to tour potential sites, as well as create a poll, solicit feedback from the community. We chose Sojourner Truth Park due to its proximity to the School of Engineering Sciences as well as Robbie Waters Library. Students at the school site would be able to use some of the plots from the community garden to not only enrich their curriculum, but also take home fresh produce to their families. The Friends of the Pocket Library led by Kathy Winheim have pledged, have pledged to put together a seed library as well as put together a series of tools that can be checked out by community members to work on the garden. This garden will become a rallying point for our community, where neighbors will come together for years to come to work the soil. I want to thank, on behalf of our group, I want to thank Councilmember Jennings, his chief of staff Dennis Rogers, as well as our District 7 Parks Commissioner Devon Lavelle. Their support, unending support over the years has been amazing. They really have made our dream of a community garden come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Very good. All right, Councilmember Warren, you have a recusal?
Yes. I-
It's-
Was item three continued?
Item three was-
Item three will be adopted on May 8th. The agenda says May 1st, but we are passing for publication this evening.
So I'll recuse myself from item three.
Exactly. So Councilmember Warren is recusing himself on item three. You have a motion, a second on the consent calendar. We'll note Councilmember Warren's recusal, but you can vote on the remainder of the items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. The measure's passed unanimously, eight to nothing, with a seven to nothing vote on item three, with Councilmember Warren abstaining. All right, we now move to public comment on items not on the agenda. I'm going to ask Ms. Capi to please read and remind the public of the rules of procedures when it comes to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I'd like to note that item number 19 on the discussion calendar will be continued till the next council meeting. If anyone's here for that item. And then this meeting is being videotaped and can be viewed live on the city's website or viewed later from the archive files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned into the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. And so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline those decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slips. For instance, use of swear words, words yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect is discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease any disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available upon request from the clerk. And at this time, please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. Parking validations are also available from the clerk in the front of the room.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I just want to add very briefly, as I said last week, these are the people's chambers, and this is a place for you to be heard and for your elected representatives to deliberate and vote on important matters to the city. We want to ensure that everyone is heard in a civil way, and we know that sometimes around any issue that emotions are, can be sometimes high, and that's okay. But I want to reiterate that the use of vulgarity in any way in these chambers that disrupt the meeting, you'll be asked to leave. And if you shout out in ways that disrupt the meeting, you'll be asked to leave as well. Those are the rules. We're going to enforce them uniformly and fairly. And let's have, let's make this a place of robust public discourse where you can tell us exactly how you feel, agree, disagree, or anything in between, but in a way that is respectful and civil, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have 21 speakers this evening for matters not on the agenda. The first is Leon Coros, then Michael Voy, then Kevin Coyle. Leon?
Excuse how quickly I'm going to try to talk because I have a whole page to read.
You have two minutes, sir.
She's handing those out. Do I start now?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name's Leon Coros. I'm a business owner, property owner, and taxpayer. I'd like to share with you an odyssey regarding public safety and bureaucratic lunacy that started July 17th, if you can see on the front page, when I paid the $610. Next page for you guys. This is old Sacramento. This is my property on K Street. Some of the pillars in front of my property are unsafe. They have dry rot, they are splitting. Today, I have jack stands on the corners to ensure that they don't hurt the public. I'm not the only property owner doing this. Notice they are incorporated into the boardwalk, so you can't inspect them without taking the boardwalk apart. Please ask me at the end of this what that's all about. Notice that they are attached to the roof of my building. Next page. Notice the assessor's parcels drawing. The city owns an 80-foot wide parcel. That goes from threshold to threshold across K Street, putting these pillars 12 feet into the city property. In other words, these pillars belong to the city. From, next page. From the redevelopment agreement in 1971, change the page and look at the underlying prints, it states that the property owner is responsible to maintain all improvements on its property. That is you, the city. You own that property. Next page. Several city employees have helped me for months trying to figure out what to do about this. There are no agreements on record that says who owns what and who's supposed to do what. I have tried for months to meet with Steve Hansen, but he's been too busy. A city attorney named Gerald Charles Hick told me our discussion would bear no fruit, and he blew me off and refused to meet even though my taxes pay his $126,237 salary. Each time I get to the, try to get to the bottom of this and figure out what we can do to make this safer, they just get weaker and more dry rot, and it continues to get worse. This is a public safety issue.
Mr. Coros, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
I want to make a recommendation here. Hold on, I think we've heard you.
So let's take your name and number and then I'll-
We'll take your name and number, and we will have somebody from the city manager's office call you directly and see if we can help you figure it out.
All right, fantastic.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Michael Voy, following Mr. Voy's, Kevin Coyle, and then Brenda Anderson.
Evening, Mayor.
Voy.
The problem in the Stephon Clark case and in the Joseph Mann's case is revolves around credibility and trust, public trust. And that's been said many times in this chamber, and that's what I'm predicating my case on. Over the weekend, I read the Sacramento Bee and Ann Schubert was quoted as saying that she, her, the request, her calls to indict the officers in the Joseph Clark case, that decision couldn't be made until the investigation was completed by the city and the information forwarded to her. Now, that isn't quite what happened in Joseph Mann's case. It's close, but not precise. In his particular case, some information was passed to her and she made a decision, but the investigation at the city, as my understanding and reading the Bee articles, was not complete. Either the Public Safety Accountability Office or the Internal Affairs Investigation, neither one of those investigations were complete when she made her decision not to prosecute in that particular case. But what did happen was as soon as she decided not to prosecute, as soon as that happened, the city settled with the wrongful death suit with the family, and some other things happened. Now there, my time is up, but I'll be back and continue on down this path because the Joseph Mann timeline holds a lot of information.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kevin Coyle, then Brenda Anderson, then Melissa McTurn.
Greetings. I was here last week for item 17. While waiting, I made some observations. You pledged allegiance to a republic, specifically the democratic republic defined and embodied in the U.S. Constitution. The essence of the Constitution comes across in seven words, which I'll read. All sovereign power resides with the people. Okay. When you see concerned young people here expressing their pain, that's what the Constitution looks like. Black Lives Matter is what citizenship looks like, what patriotism looks like, and what democracy looks like. You fail in your pledge of allegiance when you meet the hearts and souls of these citizens with your masks of grim, impervious unresponsiveness. Your manner is frustrating, infuriating, and fans flames of anger. I feel real pain when Ann Marie Schubert wore her mask of unresponsive imperviousness, beyond cruelty to Joseph Mann's family and on to torture. Your endorsements didn't fan- Your endorsements didn't fan flames, they poured gasoline on the flames of conflict. Now, I agree with the mayor. We should move towards civility. So first, retract your Schubert endorsements. Step two, issue a conciliatory statement to the people you've been busy pushing away. I wrote a rough draft, which you and the BLM people might want to fine tune. We, the nine members of the Sacramento City Council, salute the members of Black Lives, Black Lives Matter, and the allies of Black Lives Matter.
Mr. Coyle, your time has expired. Will you make your final comments?
We salute their commitment to citizenship and democracy, their profound dedication, their hunger and thirst for justice, and their spirit of...
Our next speaker is Brenda Anderson, and then Melissa McTurnan. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening.
My name is Brenda Anderson. I am not affiliated with any organization other than a person with a heart. I am here to tell you that I would like for hope to always remain alive. I am here for the voices that are not here, gone, and the ones that are here, not speaking. I'm going to take you back a little bit. Remember when the newscaster said, "It's 10 o'clock. Do you know where your children are?" So we made some resolutions and took some steps, but we need to go forward into the home where the heart is, and the strength and the structure of these personalities that are out there in the wind. So I would like to propose to the council that in addition to reaching out to the youth, there be some type of avenue for the home front to redefine themselves, that the image that the young ones have would revert into something more profitable for them. They don't have this idea that they profiled into. So, hold 40 seconds. Anyway, keeping hope alive, this is not over. There's much work still to do, and we need to start thinking, what are we going to put on the table now? Where are we going to go forward? And we all know how we got here. I said that last time. Somebody in the home guided us. So if the child is in trouble, more likely than the home might be also. It's a sad thing, but we got to face it. Otherwise, we're going to be back this way again. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson.
Our next, our next speaker is Melissa McTurnan, then David Brady, then Dr. Andrea Elmore. Melissa?
I'm not Melissa, but like, I am going to introduce Melissa. I'm Professor Stan Oden. I am the faculty coordinator for the task force on race, immigration, and social justice at Sacramento State. And we are very concerned about what happened in, in our town with the killing of Stephon Clark. So we have a, a letter that we want to give to the council. So Melissa, and these are all faculty members here supporting.
Hi, thank you. So that, as Stan mentioned, we are a Center for Race, Immigration, and Social Justice Task Force, and we are all faculty members and members of the task force. And I did send an email of this letter to you all, and I have a hard copy I'll leave with you today. But mainly, I'll cut to the chase. The task force recognizes that racialized policing in America has long historical roots in plantation and hacienda policing of enslaved and indigenous black, black people and black labor. The historical legacy of our police force cannot simply be reformed, and we must actively strive towards policy, culture, and behavior that place social justice and human rights at the center of a democracy that is working for everyone. To this end, the members of our task force recommend the following specific actions to the city of Sacramento. One, to develop and pass a more comprehensive use of force policy that relies on objective and operational definitions around use of force and de-escalation, including when it is and is not appropriate to use each approach. We note in here that the San Francisco Police Department has developed such a policy that could be used as a model for our city, and we recognize the need for a thorough policy and request that the council work promptly to complete this task. Two, support the Senate Bill 1421 introduced by Senator Nancy Skinner, which will put an end to secrecy and lack of transparency that currently exist around policing, police shootings and deadly use of force. And finally, to withdraw council member endorsements for District Attorney Anne Marie Schubert. We recognize that everyone sitting up there is currently listed as an endorse, endorser of her campaign, and...
Turnan, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
That's my final comment, too. Bring your endorsements for Anne Marie Schubert. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is David Brady, then Dr. Andrea Elmore, and then Robert Copeland. Brady?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, council members. On January 31st of this year, a 71-year-old woman and a six-year-old boy were hit at Freeport and Oregon Drive, where the city had removed a crosswalk. On the 9th of February, the woman died from her injuries. On the 23rd of February, I wrote to Mayor Steinberg and Vice Mayor Hanson, asking that the city replace a crosswalk that it had removed at West El Camino and Grasslands. On the 28th of February, Vice Mayor Hanson responded that the city intended to move that crosswalk and install a hawk beacon. I reiterated at that time that I believe the city, the city needed to repaint the crosswalk that had been removed, as it created, created an unsafe situation. At 11:44 this morning, a woman was fatally struck at that intersection at Grasslands and West El Camino. It appears that the woman was walking adjacent to the crosswalk that was removed, but in addition to the crosswalk being removed, the city had removed the signage at that intersection, which certainly did not enhance the safety at that location. In recent months, the city has removed 23 crosswalks that quote-unquote "do not meet their standards." The reasoning given for this has been twofold. One is that these crosswalks may give pedestrians a false sense of security, and secondly, that removing the crossings may prompt pedestrians to cross elsewhere. The, the, the intersection where the accident occurred this morning is on a bike trail, so it is in no way feasible for pedestrians to cross elsewhere. I'm requesting two things. One, that the council hold a full hearing on this policy, because I believe it's misguided and does not have reasonable support from staff for being created. And secondly, I'm asking that the mayor instruct the city manager to immediately begin repainting all of the crosswalks that have been removed in the city of Sacramento.
Your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
Until further enhancements can be made for safety. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming tonight, and we've asked the city manager to please look into this policy, to get back to us, and we'd consider, of course, a public hearing. I want to, want to get the report back here first, but we hear you.
And I don't want to speak for Councilmember Hanson, but I know he's questioned the, the policy as well.
I understand. Well, you expressed it very well.
Thank you.
And somebody, somebody died, so we need to, we need to look into this, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. Andrea Elmore, Robert Copeland, then Alex Clark.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Elmore, and although I am affiliated with several organizations and institutions in the city of Sacramento, I stand in front of you today as a human being. Angelique Ashby, I am in your district. I would like to read a little bit of information and then just ask you a couple of questions. And this information comes from ShotSpotter.com. Question number one, what is a ShotSpotter? ShotSpotter is gunshot detection, acoustic surveillance technology that uses sophisticated sensors to detect, locate, and alert law enforcement agencies of illegal gunfire incidents in real time. The technology detects gunfire when a gun is discharged, protects officers with increased tactical awareness, and connects law enforcement agencies to the community and to their mission to protect and serve. Question number four, how does ShotSpotter help law enforcement? ShotSpotter helps protect officers by instantly notifying them of gunshot crimes in progress with real-time data delivered to dispatch centers, patrol cars, and even smartphones. This enhances officer safety and effectiveness with critical intelligence such as real-time access to maps of shooting locations and gunshot audio, audio, actionable intelligence detailing the number of shooters and the number of shots fired, accurate and precise locations for those first responders aiding victims, searching for evidence and interviewing Question number seven, is it worth the money? Saving lives and improving the quality of life in neighborhoods across the country while improving officer safety is mission critical. We believe that we will be able to measurably reduce gun violence and improve public safety, and in the process, enhance the resiliency of the communities we serve. In the long term, the positive impact of improved public safety is reflected in better socioeconomic standards. Why was ShotSpot, a ShotSpotter used in the aiding and killing of Stephon Clark? Was that not a misuse of military technology? And why has Sacramento agreed to 1.1 million on this technology?
After Mr. Copeland is Alex Clark, then LB Pixel, Ron Elmsley, and then Chris Rogers.
You left this behind. Okay, well, try to get it back to them. Thank you.
Well, yesterday, I was over at the Capitol, and these are some of the bills in Affordable Housing Act, which will repeal Costa-Hawkins, which got 588,000 signatures, easy enough to qualify for November 28 election. I believe city council would agree on some of these bills, like speed development of permanent supportive housing. Am I correct on that? Anybody read the article in today's Sacramento B, Sacramento's poverty growth ranks among highest in the U.S.? Let's lower that, especially in disadvantaged neighborhoods along Metta View. I wish city council members on Metta View, that and as probably Larry Carr or Jennings did, I'm one of those two districts. But this, eight, 2010, it was six disadvantaged neighborhoods, now it's 18 in this region. And I'd like to make one request to city councils, especially Mayor Steinberg. When SB 1, SB 2, and SB 3, SB 3 gets voted, hopefully gets voted yes by the citizens, let's go for that money.
Yes.
And a cap and trade, let's go for that money.
Yes.
Why are you interrupting?
Let's, let's undo it this time. And, uh, no place like home funds. Let's go for that, any, any, any other funds that we can get. Let's help the people in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Clark is our next speaker. He's not here. Alex, LB Pixel, then Ron Elmsley, then Chris Rogers.
Excuse me, we haven't called your name.
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have? Did you call Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, you need to shut up.
Excuse me. You're warned. That's one.
You know what? You are being rude to all of us. You interrupt us all the time, but we can't, we can't tell you to shut up? Shut up is a word in the dictionary. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, people are being intentionally shot. They're not just being run over. Stephon Clark is, was shot intentionally, okay? So, you know, it's not just trees that are dying. People are dying. You, sir, it's, you know, you make grief into something that's pathological. So Devante Clark was recently jailed because he was, he was handling his grief in his way. So, you know, why are you pathologizing grief? People would have PTSD if their brother was killed execution-style by public servants. This trauma continues to be exacerbated by ongoing delays and excuses by you and Anne Marie Schubert to indict the killer cops. I hear they are back on the job.
They are.
Dismissing those officers is not enough to serve and serve little to address Devante Clark's trauma, until you can provide substantive transformative justice in ways of repairing the pain caused by injustice and inadequate corrective actions by making policy changes within the law enforcement agencies. The people will continue to be in pain. We are all traumatized by the ongoing police brutality. It only appears to be mental illness due to the lack of accountability and failure to listen to the people who are directly impacted by your failure of governance. Tell me, how sane would you look if your family members are executed in the backyard on the street?
Time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
Once again, you've chosen to overlook the voice of the people.
Our next speaker is Ron Elmsley. Ms. Kiskel, your time has expired.
And if you're anyone that appears to be in disagreement with failed justice, you should be ashamed of the sense for me to help you.
Your time is up. I'm going to ask you to leave, Ms. Lee. Ms. Lee, you need to leave. Go. You've exceeded your time.
I leave when I want to.
Okay.
And I will leave when I'm ready.
Well, then, I guess it's now. See you later. Bye. Thank you.
Mr. Elmsley is our next speaker.
Please escort, please escort, Ms...
I'm 13:12 before me to go on additional 15 seconds.
Excuse me, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Mr. Elmsley.
You assholes.
See you later.
Mr. Elmsley is our next speaker, then Chris Rogers, then Stephanie Duncan.
There's been one or more articles in the Sacramento B about extending that half a percent sales tax, making it permanent, and maybe even increasing it. What tends to happen is Local 522, they love this. They, they put their fangs in this, and they suck out as much money as they can possibly suck. And I think this is wrong to raise, because there, you're going to have people that are just going to try to take it all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Rogers, then Stephanie Duncan, then Karen Kay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is a community crime map for January through April of this year. Notice the needles on the map. This is what's been reported. Notice the red circles on the map. This is why my neighbors and children, this is what my neighbors and children have seen during the same time period. Because of the prevalent drug use and issues, I no longer take my kids with me while running basic errands to businesses like Walgreens, Target, or the post office, because I never know what they will see. To give you a better visual, here are photos taken by me and neighbors from March and April. These photos are the hard truth. Drug dealing is a business, and business is good. City Council, will you work to include addicts in whole-person care? Please remember, they won't accept services as long as they are easily supplied with drugs by dealers willing to cater to them. We need a well-staffed drug enforcement team to address dealers and keep drugs away from addicts. That means hiring and supporting law enforcement. The only people who truly benefit from less officers on our streets are criminals, including drug dealers. And these photos show criminals are very satisfied with things just the way they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Duncan, then Karen Kay.
Duncan?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Duncan, and I'm a resident of Land Park. We have a situation, as Chris mentioned, that we have a number of people living on our streets who are not victims of high rental prices or difficulty finding work. We primarily have people on our streets who use heroin. They are slaves to their addiction. They have chosen to live on the street. Their dealers come to our neighborhood to deliver the drugs, which is why people stay. People are panhandling, not for food or for rent money, but so they can pay their dealer. I have speak to a number of people living on our streets. They're not from Sacramento. Some are even, not even from Sacramento. Some are even not even from California. They are young, able-bodied addicts who do not want to work, who do not want to have a home. They want to live on the streets and live by their own rules. I've spoken with them, but I've also reached out to their family. The picture you see before you is Jeff. He's 40 years old. He's from Virginia. He lives with his dog for about a year and a half. He handles on the corner and frequents the heroin camps along H, or, excuse me, X and W. I spoke with Jeff's mom, who said, "We know he's in Sacramento by choice. Sad but true. Thank you for trying to assist families. If you know how to find me, if there's anything I need to know, he's been like this for over 15 years. We can only hope and pray nothing else works." Then there's Dimitri. He's in his early 20s. He's been homeless in our area for at least a year. He's very courteous. He's from Tacoma, Washington, panhandles near the tower where he is here. He's a heroin addict and spends time with his fellow addicts along W and X. I wrote to his sister, and she said, "We are aware of Dimitri's whereabouts. His family is from Tacoma. My family and I frequently visit him, and we spent Easter with him. We have tried to convince him to come home with us over the past two years, but he refuses. He has a family who loves and cares about him and somewhere to come home to. At the moment, he doesn't want to, but hopefully that will change. Thanks for reaching out." So I want you to know that we do have people on our streets who were paying for cleanup and outreach who have places to go, and it's, in some cases, a waste of our money. But I hope that the whole-person care program can help.
Please stay for the presentation in a few minutes.
Karen Kay is our next speaker, and then Mary Tappel.
It's no surprise that we have a problem with drug addicts who are homeless, living along the Broadway and X corridor. They live on our streets near my home. They use the street as a bathroom. They shoot up drugs in front of our kids, and they are aggressive panhandlers. Every day, as I drive to work or on my way home, I witness drug deals going down. For example, here are two men walking along 26th between Broadway and X, behind the Carl's Jr., and in broad daylight, a drug deal went down. Here is a picture of Nick, who is a registered sex offender and a drug addict. Just the other day, he was hanging out at the Taco Bell on Broadway, where a bunch of kids go, panhandling for money as cars left the drive-through. My 17-year-old son was asked that in exchange for using his cellphone at the Chevron gas station at the corner of 19th and Broadway, he would be given weed. We have a problem. And you know what happens at night? All these homeless drug addicts troll our neighborhoods to support their daily habit. They rummage through our cars, they steal our bikes, and they steal packages and mail. And you know where all those stolen goods show up? At a drug-addict homeless garage sale under the freeway at 15th and X or 28th and X. How do we or the city solve these problems? Well, for starters, Mr. Mayor, we hire more police officers. We need a drug enforcement team. We need to stop the suppliers and the dealers. If this dries up, then the drug addicts along Broadway and X will leave. Right now, we have 1.32 sworn officers for every 1,000 residents. According to the FBI, nationally, there are an average 2.4 sworn officers per 1,000 residents. Why is Sacramento falling so far behind? I am a proud supporter of the men and women of the Sacramento Police Department. SACPD is overworked, overwhelmed, and they don't have a drug team that could easily deal with this kind of stuff. We need more officers. We have to take pride in our city and utilize the resources we have, but when we are low on resources, we can't manage as a functioning city. We need to strive to become a city where families, friends, and everyday citizens aren't embarrassed and disgusted as they go about their day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Tappel, then Bob Anderson, then Mac Elworthy.
Up on the screen is Zania Jenkins, who was raised in Del Paso Heights as Zania Benson, and she's married to Moses Jenkins here, Morehouse graduate. That's the undergraduate alma mater of Dr. King, of course, and his parents, and two of my honorary grandkids here in the front. And my husband and I paid for us to go to her graduation in Illinois. It was quite, at the time, they were living in Sacramento, North Sacramento, so it was quite a bill. But I want you to know there are people working in the city for everybody's rights. This is another young man, much earlier, maybe 20 years back now, outreach at Hagenwood Park. I met him recently on the streets of Sacramento. I like to meet so many of the young people I used to work with on community public service. And he happily told me he was a state worker now, making good money, et cetera. There are two more of my honorary granddaughters. They're now living in Las Vegas, along with their two brothers. And they benefited much in this same Hagenwood Park when there were troubles with people misusing the park for drug dealing, et cetera. They were able to play there safely after school, only because the police came. And here's yet some more. Some of these had their children now grown, they are now grown and have children of their own came to one of our events. But I just wanted to go on more for that B article that came out in 2017 about all the teens that were getting murdered. Our teens are being murdered at a staggering rate. Violence claimed the lives of 114 teens in Sacramento between 2007 and 2017. Nearly all were killed by guns, 40% unsolved. These are all families that deserve justice too. Please, everybody, think about them.
Our next speaker is Bob Anderson, then Mac Worthy.
This is regarding the police murders. I'm going to read a prepared statement. Again, I'm going to defer the moral and ethical questions this brings up, but to say this, harsh words or put all this spin on it, you need to try and make yourselves feel better. They took a life. They took a life. There is another way to take a life, though, and that is through the abuse of power found in all aspects of county law enforcement, and I use that term loosely. Time will not permit me to elaborate in a meaningful way that allows presentation of the facts and the evidence to support them. But let me speak in more relatable terms. This is bad business. Any business looking to establish a business presence in Sacramento, Sacramento County, and probably California in general would do well to look elsewhere. A wise CEO or burgeoning entrepreneurial enterprise would not risk subjecting themselves or their workforce to bear the brunt of corrupt law enforcement machine, a systemic farce. Nor do they want to have to subsidize the poor performance and subsequent liabilities brought on by these actions and inactions as additional taxes and levies. Implicit bias, sounds like a fancy way to attempt to describe the misdirected rage and ingrained hatred that is palpable with closed minds at its core. What about the implicit bias in this chamber and well-established in the police department and propagated by the new chief, the DA, and the judiciary? You can't act on or correct what you don't understand, especially if you're unreceptive to the truth of the matter. Having said this, wouldn't intelligent leaders want to know what kind of experience I had, unless you already know and are just trying to attempt...
Anderson, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Now this is going to...
Mr. Anderson, it's a blessing here at CBS. I was expected...
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then William Hennessy, and then Amber Terra Forte. Mr. Worthy?
All we are asking you people to back the Constitution of the United States. You tell me you got, "I have 9,000 people watching me per night." I want 9,000 emails right here. But we look at some things, and we think to Rick, what you done the other night with the last cabin's family. But you couldn't do that to the other boys down here. So be careful what you're doing. You got that at a narc line in not Washington, D.C. Okay, now, we want to look at what Trump getting ready to do. Put boxing back in play, Jack Johnson, go back in the history, best that ever been. So we got to say thanks to Trump to do that. But Matt, you are your own problem. You are your own problem. You got, nobody got to restrict you no more, youngsters, because you allowed that to happen. All you have to do is say, "Look, take this to the church and sob and come back." Yes, you got on TV, but I have people calling me of the problem that I'm having here, New York, South Carolina, and Washington, D.C. It's not my problem. So if you just listen sometime and go. But the critical thing here is we're not seeing black people step into the plate here. All the Sunday morning pimps are right there, they're worried about what those boys are saying. Those are your constituents that will vote you back in. You know what I'm saying? You got, I'd say, gain leadership. If the people that's here can't accept your leadership, tell them to go to hell. It's going to be on your shoulders. It's going to be not said, "Oh, this City Council," just like we see some people coming here just while they go and say, "Well, okay, what's happening with drugs on Broadway?" Nobody saying what's happening to SAC High, 90% surrogate school. State law and federal law said libiate surrogate school. People that moved in Oak Park, there's 90% of young white people.
Mr. Worthy, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
90% of, hold on, 90% of white people that will vote to put the charter school out...
Our next speaker is William Hennessy, then Amber Terra Forte. Mr. Hennessy?
That may not be your position.
Mr. Hennessy is next speaker.
That may not be your position. I give... Yes, yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
There's some bias here that we need to get rid of some.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's William Hennessy, and I'm here on behalf of myself, as well as thousands of other patients that are a part of my cooperative and collective in Sacramento. We've jumped from property property trying to congregate for a safe place to consume our medicine. With the new laws intact, we have nowhere to consume except for our houses or possibly Cal Expo. We don't care to go to Cal Expo as a community, but to be able to get together somewhere safely other than in our homes and in front of our children. With the new laws passed, we have nowhere else to go. I have a property down here at 205 26th Street in Sacramento that Hanson has called the police department on. I've had to deal with code enforcement. I've had to deal with the police department and nothing but threats of civil penalty of $25,000, but I've yet to be cited. I've had no more than, there was never 200 or more people on my lot at any given time, so no need for an assembly permit. And now they're threatening nothing but fines because we're consuming medicine in a private property, whether it's a residence or not. We aren't doing anything else, and we're being continuously harassed. My patients are in fear when the cops show up in numbers, mind you. We had over 17 officers respond this weekend, over the 4/20 weekend. To just threaten and harass us, yet nothing was done. I haven't received a single citation. We've been doing this for over three years in Sacramento with many different organizations, and we've had zero violence, zero issues, zero anything short of parking problem, and the neighbors continue to call. I'm tired of being harassed and law enforcement coming out to our property to shut something down that isn't illegal. We aren't doing nothing but congregating and consuming, and as Prop 215 patients, we still have the right to consume our medicine, as far as my understanding. And you guys have taken that away from us and forced us to Cal Expo or a private residence, where as a patient, I could still smoke outside, like they're using meth outside, yet I'll be cited, and that's not fair.
Time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
You guys need to change your policy on where we can and cannot consume cannabis in Sacramento. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amber Terra Forte, then Amanda Armando Flores.
I wanted to discuss also, my name is Amber Terra Forte. I am a lifetime resident of Sacramento and also a medical marijuana patient. I wanted to discuss also what onsite consumption means. So onsite consumption means the opportunity to medicate. It means education. It means community and safety. So Sacramento has decided to group with Cal Expo, and the only event that's being allowed there is High Times. So I'm going to pay a $50 fee as a medical patient just to step foot in the door. That is not going to work for veterans. That is not going to work for senior citizens. It's not going to work for anybody that I know. And as you all know, basically, everybody in Sacramento smokes cannabis. We are in a state of constant chaos, and we're looking for more ways of wellness. And instead of giving us places to consume, forcing us to be in our home, you're basically punishing Prop 215 patients. I am a manager at a dispensary, and even with a 30% discount, I still cannot afford the medicine at my club. I would like to point out that these local sessions here in Sacramento are about community. There have never been any issues of violence. This is an opportunity for a wide demographic of people of all socioeconomic status to come together to do what we do, and that is to medicate. We are not getting drunk at bars, causing fights. We're not out in the streets rooting or doing anything crazy. We are medicating safely, and I just want to bring that to your attention again, that we are here, and to please just, please just be fair when you're making these decisions on cannabis regulations and our onsite consumption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Armando Flores, and our final speaker is Cynthia Kay.
Good evening, Council. I'm here to ask that the city of Sacramento gets rid of the anti-homeless ordinance, please. I think it's time. We have had so many issues in Sacramento. You just heard three people complaining about people in the streets going to the bathroom on the streets, yet you failed to tell them that you took all the bathrooms in the parks away, and public places in Sacramento are not allowing people to go into the restrooms to go in there. So you need to start installing the bathrooms again. Please, can you open them so people are safe? We need hand-washing stations to help prevent the outbreak of hepatitis that they had in San Diego and Santa Cruz. We just had in the newspaper a big article about the problems on the river. That is caused by the lack of bathrooms in Sacramento, and you know it, and you refuse to open the bathrooms. What is the problem? We have plenty of money in Sacramento to afford bathrooms, attendance, and people to take care of them. I don't understand why it's taking so long. We have been fighting for this for two years. Please have some heart and some compassion for these people from Sacramento. They're our people. They're us. It could happen to all of us. If there's an outbreak of hepatitis or E. coli, as we have in the river, it's going to affect the whole city, not only the people that are on the streets, and not only the people that are doing drugs on the streets, it's going to affect the whole city of Sacramento, including you. And you should be aware of that. You should be compassionate and work on it, please. We have lots of money. I know we do. You have told me that before. Let's put it to use. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Kay. Is Cynthia here? Cynthia Kay?
I didn't see you.
I'm here representing homeless seniors. I know you want us to disappear. It's nice weather, so you're figuring we can camp anywhere. I will share with you my story. I went on Winter Sanctuary. I was hospitalized with pneumonia on March 30. I was in Kaiser Hospital until April 4, which they discharged me with pneumonia. A friend took me into their home. The next morning, not only did Kaiser not give me the medication, they did not give me a walker. So I couldn't even get up off the ground. I had to have the ambulance come and get me. I was admitted to UC Davis on the 5th with pneumonia. They kept me until the 11th. I'm curious why Kaiser felt the need to get rid of me. UC Davis did provide me with the medicines that I needed. They did provide me with a walker, which I no longer have to use. I have my basket. You have to remember, we're still out there. Your laws are not protecting us. The 60-day notice without any cause is a problem. Allowing people to raise rent 9% each year are hurting seniors. People like me are going to increase. We're not going away. We're not going away, and I'm not going to stop coming in to tell you.
I'm glad. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers for matters not on the agenda.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We've dispensed with the consent calendar, now let's move to our public hearings. We've got three public hearings tonight. Member File Item 19 has been continued. So let us begin with Item 16, please, a TEFFRA hearing. Who's presenting on this? Do we have anyone presenting? Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and Council members. My name is Lisa Yang, and I am here with my colleague Brian Wong. We represent the City Treasurer's Office. Also here with us, from the California Municipal Finance Authority, is Ben Barker, and from the Asian Community Center of Sacramento Valley, are Derek Lamb, the Chief Executive Officer, Donna Yee, the retiring Chief Executive Officer, and Ray G., the Controller. After I conclude, Mr. Lamb will elaborate on ACC, who they are, what they do, and the proposed project that we are here about. This evening, we ask that a public hearing be conducted on behalf of Asian Community Center of Sacramento Valley in pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, which is known as TEFFRA. The Asian Community Center of Sacramento Valley is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization as defined by IRS. The center proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $29 million to finance the construction and acquisition of a new assisted living and memory care center that will be approximately $64,000 square feet, consisting of 38 studios, 34 one-bedroom assisted living units, 30 memory care living units, and support services to be located at 7579 Maple Tree Way in Sacramento, California, within Council District 7. CMFA will be assisting in the issuance of the debt.
Excuse me one second, I'm sorry.
So I think the organization ACC, who has served the Sacramento community since, for the last 40 years, who provides nursing home, independent living, assisted living units, senior services, transportation, meals on wheels, on and on and on, I think as it relates to this project, we know the organization and we know this project well. So I want to save you a little brevity if I can, and I'd like to open the hearing, close the hearing, I'd like to move the item.
Second. Anything you'd like to say to conclude, any?
Mr. Lamb, is there anything you would like to?
We don't have anyone signed up publicly, but you'll...
I do have two speakers.
We do have two speakers, I apologize. Let's hear from the speakers. Thank you.
I have two speakers on Item 16, Michael Voy and Mac Worthy. Mr. Voy?
18.
Mr. Worthy, your third time. Mr. Voy, you coming up?
No, I was on 19, like, no, probably was like a...
Okay, it's okay. Mr. Worthy?
Mr. Worthy?
Your third time. We've got one more after this.
The main thing, people, I don't oppose the agents at the center, but I oppose backtracking. We saw this years ago, Robertson Center, Peneil Center, and the Center in Oak Park. What have they done to help those neighborhoods? Nothing. They are costs to the city. That's what happened. There's bias in hiring. Now, the agent people at Oak Park, we have, at Oak Park, we have, the employment now is the majority of agents. Where did the black folks go? That's that neighborhood. See, what I'm saying, black folk, get your finger out of your wrex and think for yourself. The same bonds here that you could put on the podium for housing, that possibly behind the old fat rounds, the government gave SHRA that free, you hocked it for $2 million. That should be the pilot program, as mayor, you set the opportunity of people of color to go into business. Use the same bond money and bill it, and we operate it, and we pay the city back. This here bond, this is gonna be a debt to the city of Sacramento.
Are you in favor of the project, or not?
No, I'm not against the project. I'm saying what black people could put on the podium. You've got three black people here, ain't never putting nothing on the podium for us. We're tired of playing. We need business, economics. Is many houses, short of housing here, and what the city of Sacramento doing to the housing of Elk Road, and the other two cities that you dealt with here under sanctuary setup, you should be on top of that. Get a lawyer on top of it. I'll be out of Elk Road tomorrow night, people. This has got to stop. We can use the same resources to help us, economics is, the people give it to other people to help us. We don't need other people's help, we got the resources to do ourselves. We got people right here can deal with those same resources.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. So one thing I would like to say, ACC, Greenhaven Terrace, the Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, the Senior Services Center, and the Meals on Wheels program that they do, plus many, many more that I can't mention at this point in time. They are probably one of the most diverse senior citizen centers that we have in the city of Sacramento, so I speak very strongly to this program. I want to open the hearing, close it, and I want to move the item.
Second. Thank you. Moved in second, it's fabulous work that Center has done for a lot of years, and...
I'd also like to just bring up very quickly Dr. Donna Yee, who is, I'd like her just to come to the microphone very quickly, if you will, and also the young man that ultimately is going to be the heir apparent, Dr. Lamb.
Dr. Yee? Dr. Lamb?
Just any comments that you'd like to make?
Just brief, if you would.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg, and also Council members, thank you for this opportunity to allow us to come to the podium. We are indeed very honored to be here to present to you another wonderful plan that we have, and that's the Maple Tree Assisted Living and the Memory Care Center. So with that, we provide 102 units of assisted living and memory care for people so that they can continue to age in place, and with our, you know, track record since 1972, and I believe that, you know, this is a much-needed project in District Number 7, and we appreciate all your support for this.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you, Dr. Yee. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, abstain. That measure passes eight to nothing. Mr. Getta?
Senator Gerga?
Mr. Getta?
Will we confirm when he records?
Okay, very good.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Maryam Lim with the Community Development Department, and I am the assigned planner for project number P-17016, also known as the Mac and Franklin Development. Before you is a request to develop a gas station with car wash and convenience market, two office buildings, a retail space, and a restaurant on approximately 4.25 acres. The request also includes the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Subject site is a vacant parcel located on the southwest corner of Mac Road and Franklin Boulevard intersection, and the site is zoned shopping center in the International Plaza Plan Unit Development. The project is being heard by the City Council because a 1993 ordinance rezoned the site from office building zone to shopping center with conditions prohibiting the sale of alcohol for off-site consumption and limiting the hours of operation for all uses. The request before you includes modifications to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption and eliminate the limited hours of operation. Modifying that previous conditional rezon requires council action. The applicant has met with the Deerfield Mesa Grande Neighborhood Association several times to address any concerns the association had. Notice of the public hearing were sent, and staff did not receive any calls or emails. Staff supports the project because it is consistent with the suburban corridor designation in the general plan and the South Area Community Plan. It is consistent with the shopping center PUD zone, has been conditioned to address potential impacts to neighboring uses, and provides adequate onsite vehicle and bicycle parkings for employees and visitors. Staff recommends the City Council approve the project based on the findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval listed on the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do we have no public speakers on this? Mr. Jennings?
Yes, the community has had plenty ample time to be involved and engaged in this. They are very supportive of this item. As we look at Delta Shore's coming and the opportunity to develop in the Valley High community, we see this as a viable project, and we'd like to move this item forward.
Hey, Mr. Carr?
Would you open and close the public hearing, please? I'll open and close the public hearing.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you. Are single cans of beer or bottles of beer being sold at this location?
The State Department Alcohol Beverage Control has put conditions on their license restricting single sales, so no single sales allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion carries with Mr. Mayor and Mr. Warren. Do you want to weigh in on this?
Yes.
Aye. All right. Mr. Garrett, did you want to speak on this? I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure I had my aye vote on Item Number 16.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you're up on item... We voted on 18. Okay. We now move to maybe the main item of the evening, and this is File Item 18, which is the Agreements for Implementation of Pathways to Health and Home Program, otherwise known as Whole Person Care. It's a big night tonight, actually, in the city's effort to combat the growing problem of homelessness. We want to explain what we're doing here tonight, but also, between myself and Emily and the council, want to put this into context in terms of how this fits into our overall homeless strategy. Let me turn it over to Ms. Halkin, our Homeless Services Coordinator. The technology is...
Sorry. Sorry, it was hidden.
That's okay.
My apologies. Thank you now.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council. I'm Emily Halkin, your Homeless Services Coordinator, and with me tonight are many of our partners in the Pathways to Health and Home Program, some of whom you're going to get to hear from in a bit, so I'll be as quick so you can hear mostly from them. Tonight, I'm going to briefly provide an overview of where we are today with the Pathways Program and where we're looking to go in the upcoming two and a half or three years, and pending your approval tonight of the contracts in front of you. So it's hard to believe that it was almost a year ago, just a few months shy of a year ago, that we were approved to oversee the only city implementation of the Whole Person Care Program, which we have branded Pathways to Health and Home. Pathways at its core, as you will recall, is a Medi-Cal program, but gives communities, actually challenges communities to create new innovative programs to serve medically vulnerable populations with a host of supportive services. And when we are successful in doing this, we are able to draw down matching dollars for showing that we have improved health outcomes, social well-being, and housing outcomes for those people we're targeting. As you know, we have very purposely chosen to focus our program on those experiencing homelessness and those at risk of homelessness as part of the city's overall strategy to reduce homelessness by 2,000 people by the year 2020. To do this, the Pathways Program is built on the premise of targeting those most in need, and in the world of pathways, what that means is really three things. First, that you are eligible for or enrolled in Medi-Cal, and that you are currently experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness, and that you are a frequent user of the crisis system of care, primarily our hospitals, but also touches with our police department and fire department. Pathways makes an opportunity for us to create really intra-agency service teams, we call them hubs, that will offer a variety of assertive, frequent, and ongoing service touches that are really tailored to the individual clients that we're trying to serve. Equally, though, as important, maybe not as exciting, but equally as important as the direct services we're going to be providing on the ground, is our ability as a community of diverse interests here to create a data infrastructure and a program infrastructure that we really hope will sustain these partnerships and live way beyond the pilot period of Whole Person Care. To that end, I really can't say enough about our partners, many of whom are here with us in the chambers today. I think it's really important to understand, because we are the only city implementation, and cities traditionally don't do healthcare, we really had to lean heavy and rely a lot on our health partners, housing partners, and other community-based organizations to help us stand up this program. And really quickly, if you'd like, if those of you who are part of the Pathways Program be willing to stand up really quickly, so the council can see the variety of folks just here tonight.
Well, you guys.
And they are not all here, and maybe not all of their icons are represented on this slide, but I do suspect that this list and this icon graphic will change and grow over the course of the program. At the onset, I did note that we're almost a year since the approval of Whole Person Care. Recognizing that designing and standing up the program is a heavy lift, we have been working hard, a little bit behind the scenes over the past year, and especially for a city where we don't really have healthcare infrastructure to lean on, we did a lot of work in what we've called early engagement. It's somewhat a pilot of a pilot to get us to where we are tonight. The first months of our program included developing governance structure, establishing relationships between the providers who are working on the ground. In November, as you might recall, we did launch some of our first services, a very small pilot of our services, focusing on the unsheltered folks in the North Sacramento area, and really partnering that with the Winter Triad Shelter to help stabilize the folks that we were touching and connect them to services. Our early engagement partners, who also will be partners ongoing, Sacramento Covered, Wells Space Health, Elica Health, Sacramento Steps Forward, and Sacramento Self-Help Housing, have really not only helped us test some of the early tools and processes, but their work has established a really strong base for us to now move into a full launch. I apologize, each of you has this in front of you, because it's much easier to look at in a piece of paper, so Nell gave you a copy of this. This is the most recent dashboard that we produce on, I think it's a bi-weekly basis, to document the process we're making through early engagement. We'll continue to do this in a full launch, and I imagine this will change substantially. Just as a brief snapshot, this goes through the middle of April. We provided over 6,000 service touches and enrolled 322 individuals. As you see, the referrals have come primarily through the police impact team, which is great, because we were targeting unsheltered folks in the Parkway and ride around the shelter. But we've also had quite a few referrals from our health partners and from Sacramento Steps Forward and other housing service partners. And also, as we saw in our Winter Triad Shelter, the population that we're serving is skewing to be more elderly, with 30% over the age of 55. This is the backside of the document you all have in front of you, and you can see there's a little bit more demographics. Again, this might be a little bit skewed, because the early engagement was a really targeted population, but you can see that all of the folks currently enrolled were homeless at entry, but today, 53% are in a shelter, or somewhere in a shelter, 12% have been permanently housed, and 3% are in transitional programs. And you're going to hear a bit more from a partner soon about some of the efforts on housing people. So our lessons learned from early engagement over the past few months have been critical to really inform what we're now calling full launch, which will begin with the contracts that we're seeking approval from you tonight. Full launch will include, right now, the partners listed on this slide, who will be standing up four interdisciplinary and intra-agency care coordination hubs. Each of those hubs will consist of five to seven professionals working together to support anywhere between 100 and 125 clients at a time. We do intend and really hope to add to these partners over the next few months, including one or two additional hubs, and maybe bringing on some additional housing and outreach partners. For those of us who are more visual, this might help. At full capacity, we do anticipate the program to touch up to 1,000 people at any one time, providing engagement, enrollment, care coordination, and housing supportive services, and really meeting people where they're at, providing them with comprehensive ongoing services, and helping them to stabilize and ultimately graduate off into self-sufficiency. Whole Person Care is very purposely flipping our typical approach to outreach and engagement with the goal of connecting with those who are most in need. Rather than sending a navigator out to assess folks in the hopes of finding people who potentially might be eligible, we're going to be working very closely with our community partners, including the fire department and police department, to target those most in need. And for community members or business owners who are wondering... And for community members or business owners who are wondering what this might mean to them, we really hope that this will mean deeper and more frequent touches of those who are most in need and most vulnerable, rather than large quantities of light and infrequent touches. So with that, I would like to turn the presentation over and let you hear directly from three of our partners and actually one of our clients, who have really been critical to our success thus far and who we're really excited to have on board. So I'm going to ask Ashley Brand from Dignity Health to take us off.
And welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this presentation. My name is Ashley Brand, I'm Director of Community Health and Outreach for Dignity Health's Greater Sacramento Service Area. Here tonight, I represent the four health systems, so thank you for this time. Dignity Health, Kaiser Permanente, Sutter Health, and UC Davis are extremely proud to be active partners and financial supporters of the city of Sacramento's Pathways to Help Us Home. Since the implementation, we have all been actively engaged in all three committees, including the steering IT and service delivery, and we are definitely a vocal partner in those meetings. As we all know, caring for those experiencing homelessness is very important to the four health systems. We've been meeting with you individually, and we hope we've been able to express our commitment, but we recognize that housing or lack thereof is a huge indicator for health outcomes and a significant social determinant of health. Pathways to Help Us Home is one of the many efforts that the health systems have committed to and addressed in the growing need. Other programs that we've shared is the interim care program, in which all four health systems are actively engaged, along with our partners, Wells Space Health, Volunteers of America, and Salvation Army, in addition to Dignity Health's Housing with Dignity in partnership with Lutheran Social Services and Health Net. We are extremely grateful that the city elected to apply for this opportunity, but also recognize the issue of homelessness is a systemic issue in which the entire community must play a role to address the multiple layers, to ensure this effort is not fragmented. At Dignity Health's Mercy General Hospital, we are extremely excited to be the pilot hospital to serve as the referral for Pathways to Health Plus Home. That's coming both from our inpatient and emergency department setting. This is a unique pilot in which we're testing the process and providing a roadmap to expand referrals to all hospitals within the city. I think we all must recognize that the traditional referral is not sufficient, and we are trying to develop a model in which individuals experiencing homelessness have a coordinated transition of care and services from the hospital setting into pathways. We know a traditional paper referral or even a soft handoff is not effective, it's really having those partnerships and building those relationships. One of the biggest opportunities with this process is really leveraging our existing partnership with Sacramento Covered, in which they do serve as our navigators in our emergency departments and have built the trust with the community. In closing, I want to reiterate our commitment to partnering with the city on this important work, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Brand, I'm going to ask you a question, please.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for your great work. I'm going to ask the same question of everyone who dares to come up and, no, who we welcome up. So I think it's really important for the public to understand what this does and what it doesn't do, right? What Whole Person Care is doing, in a most dramatic and effective way, is professionalizing our approach to assertive outreach, to be able to actually engage with people who have been on the streets for a long time, who may be treatment-resistant, and who, because of the approach that you're taking, the team approach with people with expertise, health-based, that we expect to be able to get 1,000 people at a time into care and treatment, correct? That's the answer. We also have the mental health services from the county, which is going to enable us to add, now obviously, mental health resources, but also have the participation of those expert providers who also can help with all of the other aspects of helping an individual recover. Here's my question. What's missing? What are we collectively missing that we have to be as aggressive about to get as we were about going after Whole Person Care? What are we missing?
I think, I mean, obviously, the community at large is the housing piece of that.
Correct answer, yes. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Now, I want you to talk about this, this is important, okay?
But I think this coordinated approach in getting people ready for housing, and then having housing for the next phase, is really the critical piece of the alignment.
And when we talk about housing, right, we're talking about two elements of housing, permanent housing and more triage shelter.
Or respite beds, anything where it's the appropriate place for the individual to receive services and develop that trusted partnership with the engagement process.
So people ask me all the time, because it's been reported in the paper, you're trying to raise $20 million. For what? We're trying to raise $20 million, and we're talking to many of you about that, asking you to help again, especially the hospitals and the healthcare systems, because we need those resources for housing. We want to triple our triage capacity, because we've seen what the success about Railroad Avenue. We need to help subsidize the construction of new housing, even efficiency housing, as we have an RFI out on the street with SHRA to try to create 1,000 efficiency homes. We want to have more money to induce existing landlords of existing units to rent to people who they may have some trepidation about. And so these are the holes that exist, even with Whole Person Care and the mental health services, that we have an obligation to fill, because what happens to a Whole Person Care client who you engage in treatment, who's beginning to recover, but who you can't find housing for?
My question?
Yes.
It's, I mean, they likely, they will continue to need ongoing services, and, I mean, housing is a critical piece if they're ready for housing.
We're one key piece away from making the biggest dent we've ever made on this problem in the city, and that's housing. I don't have to ask everybody else, sorry, Ashley.
No, but we're all committed active partners in this.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to ask Jody Norrell from Sacramento Covered to come up and share the work they've been doing.
Jody, welcome.
Thank you. You know, I would like to begin by thanking you, council members, Mayor, for bringing Whole Person Care to Sacramento. It has been a game changer in terms of what we're already able to deliver so early on in this early engagement phase, so I just want to start with that appreciation on behalf of Sacramento Covered and myself and our team, so very much appreciated and grateful. Good evening, my name is Jody Norrell. I'm the Behavioral Health Director for Sacramento Covered, and I am leading our work on Pathways. This evening, I would like to share with you our role in the program and how the Pathways approach we have implemented over the past six months is working. For those of you not familiar with Sacramento Covered, we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the overall health and well-being of Sacramento's most vulnerable residents. Founded 20 years ago this year by the city of Sacramento in partnership with all four local health systems, we utilize a community health worker approach, which strengthens individual and cross-system capacity to ensure improved health and housing outcomes for our enrollees. On the health side, we connect enrollees to health coverage, to their health plan, primary and specialty care clinics, and behavioral health services. On the housing side, we assist with document collection, acquisition of disability benefits, resolution of legal issues, and we work closely with our housing partners on selection, placement, and retention of housing. For our Pathways to Help in Home, we have two major roles. The first is the Pathways Data Hub, where we are responsible for building and implementing a centralized platform to support eligibility, enrollment, and data sharing access across providers. We also track program-level data and report progress on state-required measures, including reducing ER visits and hospitalizations. We are also an assertive outreach entity. In this role, our incredibly dedicated team of community health workers responds to Pathways referrals in real time, visiting encampments, community clinics, street corners, and hospital ERs to meet and engage individuals to participate in the program. At this time, I would like to honor and acknowledge our Sacramento Community Health workers who are here today. If you guys could please stand. Many of the individuals we are serving have been let down by systems of care and can be distrustful for that reason. Our community health worker workforce has both lived experience and professional expertise in trauma, addiction, and mental health. In partnership with the enrollee, community health workers craft a care plan that is customized to each individual's wants and needs, thereby setting the groundwork for their work together. I'd like to end by introducing you to one of our Pathways enrollees, Mrs. Evans, and her community health worker, Patrick Cornell. Mrs. Evans, thank you very much for graciously agreeing to share your story with us tonight. Thank you.
Give her.
One moment, please. Plots. Zip up. Plots. Come on, down. Zip up, down.
Okay. Could you move just this way a little bit, just so I can see you, please?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. My name is Jen, and I'm here today to talk a little bit about my experience being homeless in Sacramento. I want to share how Sacramento Covered and Pathways have helped connect me to my new home. For the past 10 years, since January 13 of 2008, I have been living in my car in Sacramento with one of my service dogs. This is my third service dog, his name is Zippo. It was past my 65th birthday on January 13 of 2008, when I became homeless along with my previous service dog, Savannah. I was living in a tiny trailer in a trailer park in North Sacramento, but there was a management change, and the new manager hated me personally. Her friends threatened to burn down my trailer with me and my cats and my dog in it. I was afraid, terrified, actually, so I got out and began living in my car. There was no other option. Being homeless for me meant freedom. I was absolutely terrified to be in a permanent place, but it also meant being subjected to physical abuse and struggling to stay healthy. Being on the street was very bad on my health. In the 10 years that I was homeless, living in my car, and that's 10 years without interruption, I have been severely beaten up. There were nights that I would just drive all night long because I couldn't find a safe place to sleep. One night, after Savannah and I were on the streets for over a year, a homeless man, who I thought was my friend, and who I had helped numerous times, tried to, he accused me of stealing from him, he smashed my face, knocking me out. I was in shock and stunned. My glasses fell off and broke, and I was actually knocked out by the blow. I never was able to receive competent medical help for that injury. I had previously had social workers try to help me find housing, but it was never the right fit. But I met Patrick late last year, who is my Pathways Community Health Worker. He called me and told me that he was working with the Sacramento Police Department Impact Team. He helped me find a home that I could live in and dealt with my fears of being captured, what I call being in a box with a door. Without Patrick's support and several other social workers who have been wonderful to me, I would not be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I want to thank you for the courage to say yes.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for your willingness to tell your story publicly, because it gives hope to so many other people who may feel like they have no hope. And you're a demonstration, and we'll get the numbers in a minute, but the number of people that have been housed, who've been long-term homeless, both out of the triage center and through Whole Person Care, is in the many dozens now. And you inspire us to keep doing our work.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you.
I'm grateful.
We're grateful.
And now John Foley gets to follow that, with Sacramento Self-Help Housing.
Hi, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. I have the honor to be one of the partners in this effort. We have found it very challenging. The folks that you're trying to house are often folks that have been living on the street for a long time and really aren't fully ready for some of the challenges of moving in, which you just heard a sample of that, I guess. One couple that we housed, I want to just tell their story, sort of an example of that, had been known to us for years. We'd known them over at Loews and Fishes, they'd been sleeping outside for many years, both disabled, both with a lot of challenges, both get victimized on the street, but both have disability benefits. We were able to find a landlord that had a mobile home that he was willing to rent to somebody, and we introduced him to this couple, and they're nice folks to talk to, so he got along with them. He was concerned, because he wasn't sure what they would be like as tenants, and we were able to assure him, because of this Pathways Program, that we'd be able to be in an ongoing way in connection with him if he had problems, and that there would really be medical providers and others who could help out if there were issues. So he moved them in. It turned out that we hadn't done a good enough job working with them before we moved them in on what it meant to, for instance, pay rent. So when we got to the first of the month, well, we got to the fifth of the month, and he called us and said, you know, they didn't pay me the rent. What can I do? Well, we don't have money for rent, but we do have people. So we started thinking, we talked to him and said, let us work on this. We talked with them, and they said, we just spent our money on other things, we just didn't even know, but we want to do something. So we explained to them how it could be that there could be a representative payee, somebody who could manage their funds for them, to make sure their rent would get paid, but they would have access, of course, to the rest of the money for other needs, and they would agree to do that. So some of the Sacramento Covered folks set up an appointment for them. A doctor has to meet with them, you can't just suddenly have a payee, you've got to make sure it's a medical necessity. Well, it took a few weeks to set up the appointment, it was only for her, but they took the couple down, and they got her set up to have a payee, got the letter, and then they waylaid the doctor in the hallway and got him to, this is a true story, that's why they're laughing, and signed off on him also, and then ran over to the payee service, which unfortunately had closed at 2:00, and they got there at 3:00, so we were a day late, so it's going to be 45 days till the payee service will start. One of the checks, I think, comes, does it come tomorrow? I think tomorrow? So we're going to have to meet with them when they get their check, to make sure they capture it and cash it and get part of the rent, then the other check will come next week. In June, both checks will be to the payee service and the rent will get paid. This sounded scary to the owner, but he trusted us and he likes them, so he's agreed to keep them at the unit. There are other issues of, you know, medical issues and other issues are partly being addressed by the Sacramento Covered folks, partly by us. There are good folks in this community that own property and are willing to be helpful, but they have reason to be anxious about how to do that. This program puts in place staff, people willing to do whatever it takes, and in this case, we've got this couple housed in a way they haven't been housed for many years, and we think it'll help them stabilize their life and get on and have a good life, but it's not easy. It is so appreciative by us and everyone involved that you're willing to, you know, pay us, to put in that kind of... we, we think it'll help them stabilize their life and, and get on and, and have a good life, but it's not easy. It is so appreciative by us and everyone involved that you're willing to, you know, pay us, to put in that kind of time, keep at it until we can make it work, and, and I just really appreciate your, your efforts in that way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. And of course, you're, you're a, you're an ardent advocate for more housing, correct? Need more housing.
I, I wish we could use the housing we have more efficiently. You know, there are folks who could let us have a house and we could move in, you know, four or five people into a house instead of just rent it to one person or something. I certainly wish you could find a way to build more housing. That'd be wonderful. And I think, as Ashley mentioned, we, you know, we, you've got to have those services also, but, but if we don't have more housing, there are no place for folks to go. You know, the county has this wonderful idea of having 250 people that are going to have housing choice vouchers that we're supposed to house over the next year or something, but I've got to find 250 landlords willing to do that, and with this crazy fair market rent thing that they limit us on how much rent they can pay, it really takes people willing to go above and beyond to do that. I mean, they're going to lose some money on that deal. And so you guys, talking to your friends about being willing to work with us is, is really critical up, up and down the line when it comes to housing.
Thank you.
And thank you for that.
Thank you. Good.
I think I'm good. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you.
And I'm open for questions as well.
I know we have some public testimony. I, I want to ask Sarah O'Daniel from the agency to come on up for just a moment, if you don't mind, from SHRA, because in my monthly meeting with Director Dozier, she informed me about two new significant housing opportunities for the homeless, and I'd like to, if you don't mind, to report on those here publicly, and then to make sure, which is always the challenge here, that, to make sure we're not working at cross purposes, that, and I know SHRA has been a very diligent member of the Whole Person Care team, but any new housing opportunities that we identify, I want them fed into you, into the Whole Person Care team, so that we're working seamlessly. So tell us some good news here, will you please?
Sure, I'd be glad to. It's better than bad news, right?
Okay, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel, and I'm with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. First, I just wanted to say we're very excited and honored to be a partner with Whole Person Care, and we attend the meetings regularly that are scheduled, the coordination meetings, and we're ready with our vouchers as we start with the partners that are on board right now to provide the vouchers and also the services. Related to the two opportunities, one that I would like to mention first is that we competitively applied through HUD for some vouchers for our homeless veterans through our VASH program. And I am excited to announce-
VASH.
VASH stands for, so you're putting me on the spot, Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing. And I'm excited to mention that we have been awarded 100 vouchers from HUD to serve homeless veterans, and this is added to our existing number of vouchers.
That's in addition to the-
That's in addition.
-numbers that we've been working to consolidate over the last year to dedicate to the homeless problem, okay?
Correct. So we're very happy to receive those additional 100 vouchers.
Good. And the second opportunity?
And the second one is an opportunity, a notice of funding availability was just dropped from HUD just a few days ago, and this is to, again, to serve disabled homeless households. And so we're, at this point, just reading the notice of funding availability, and we are definitely going to be applying for the vouchers and partnering with the Pathways program.
Okay. And then I'd report that later this month, we'll report back to the council on the result of the request for information that was put out now a couple of months ago, using the additional project-based voucher capacity that the agency has, with the goal of trying to build 1,000 efficiency homes. A lot of talking and reporting about that. We got nine responses, so we're going to want to report on that, and then next steps to translate that interest into actual projects as quick, as quickly as possible. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add something else?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, Sarah didn't mention this, but Sarah and her staff gave a very, very, while, while the vouchers that have been set aside are not exclusively for Whole Person Care, we do expect and hope to target as many of those folks into these vouchers. Sarah and her staff gave a very, very extensive training to our early engagement partners on how to, the protocols for accessing them, and I know we've been successful already in getting some people, and we'll do that same thing with our full-launch partners to make sure that we are also fully integrated into the processes that SHRA has to access and utilize and make sure people stay on the voucher roll. So we, it's another way that the partnership's playing out.
That's great. That's good to know. Thank you. One team. Let's hear from the public, please.
Two speakers on this item. The first is Captain Martin Ross, and then Ryan Lufborough.
Welcome.
All right.
Two minutes, sir. Welcome to you.
You're welcome. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really want to just say on behalf of the Salvation Army, my name is Martin, I'm a captain with the Salvation Army, that we are really excited about the city's past support and about Whole Person Care and Pathways to Help Plus Home, and it's really the right thing to do, and we like everyone we're working with. However, there are some comments that I'd like to share by letter that I've submitted for the record. So greetings, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Regarding Whole Person Care Pathways, the Salvation Army celebrates the concept, but it is curious to know why the city's approach changed from the previous two years' level of assistance and funding the Salvation Army's 130-bed shelter operations in the upcoming fiscal year for 2018-19. We have heard that it is because Whole Person Care's funding restrictions towards operational costs related to the, to the shelter. As our current understanding, the shifting in funding will result in a funding loss of about $511,000 to us, which is about a quarter of our annual shelter operational costs, and a potential loss of about 40 beds. Those are newly adjusted numbers indicating 34 of the women, women's beds where the shelter, where the Salvation Army is the only shelter for single women in the county. This will include staffing reductions for our well-established shelter serving Sacramento for decades. We will not be closing our shelter, but our capacity to offer sheltering will be drastically reduced if the city's funding shifting moves forward as anticipated. This city shifting in funding was an unexpected surprise as we believe the Salvation Army's Center of Hope Shelter, 130-bed, 24/7 operation is needed in the city, and we believe our shelter is a fundamentally needed approach towards helping alleviate homelessness and towards the success of Whole Person Care. Again, the Salvation Army-
Ross, your time is expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I'm going to finish my last paragraph here. Again, the Salvation Army is not closing its shelter doors, but is looking to find ways to continue to provide housing for those who may be homeless. The shifting of the city's allocation will dramatically impact our programs and will cause a reduction in services at an estimated 40 beds, which translates to 14,600 bed nights. Unfortunately, yes, sir.
You made the point. Thank you. I want to hear from Ms. Halken, just in response, please.
Yeah, I think there's been a little bit of confusion about Whole Person Care and the shelter. So we had a, we had an initial meeting just this week with a couple of the staff from Salvation Army. As you guys will recall, the city put up general funds two years ago in partnership with Sutter Health to keep both Salvation Army and VOA open 24/7. This year, we rolled that into Whole Person Care, and what our meeting was about this week, we recognize that Whole Person Care can't pay for sticks and bricks in operations, so we had a meeting with the Salvation Army staff to discuss different ways to support the shelter. No decisions have been made about defunding at this point, and we were hoping to have ongoing conversations with the shelter staff about how we can use what is really service dollars to ensure that shelter beds aren't lost. So no decisions have been made, and we'll continue to work with Captain Ross and his staff on this.
You want to get, you'll get together after?
Yeah, we definitely, we've had one follow-up conversation with the captain and a meeting with his staff, but we'll definitely have some continual conversations.
Okay.
Thank you.
More conversations we've had. Thank you, Cap. We don't want to hurt any program. We're just trying to do our best to actually get people off the streets permanently. That's the goal here.
It was truly a shocker to us. Thank you.
Ryan?
Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. My name is Ryan Lufborough. I'm CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and on behalf of the homeless continuum of care, I want to thank you for your leadership, Mayor, and leadership in all of your council districts, as we look at this unique opportunity to implement a health-focused approach to any homelessness in Sacramento. And the city of Sacramento has had a long history with attacking this particular issue, not the least of which is the formation of Sacramento Steps Forward, later the Common Sense Program for a Housing Crisis Resolution System, and now today, this great opportunity to both have that process and this healthcare approach, I believe, together can have the greatest outcome. And on behalf of the Sacramento Steps Forward, we operate the Homeless Management Information System. We also are being considered for one of the outreach teams. We asked that you, you approved the data sharing agreement and the outreach contract. I want to thank the hospitals that have been a part of this. They have kind of been our silent partner on a grand level. They have really been able to provide the funding and the leadership we've needed in this community to move all of our efforts forward, and so I want to thank them for being a partner to all of us during this time. And Mayor, in response to your question regarding housing, all of our efforts, from Impact Team to SAC Covered, to our efforts, are all hinged on housing. The efficiency of any triage center is hinged on having a place for a person to go and live. Without that, all of our great efforts will start to stymie. So I can't emphasize enough the importance to continue down this path of finding both capacity within the housing market and within our social structures, with, back with family and friends. So Mayor, in your capacity, as you advocate for more housing, it is absolutely the right place to be, and I think, as we had mentioned another time, Austin is a good example, where mayors have really been able to make that happen for us. So thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, Ryan. I'm so glad that you're a partner with this effort because it's, it's, again, the consolidation of our existing efforts with these new efforts and seamless approaches focused on one person at a time, but counting volume. We want to get 2,000 people off the streets. That's what's going to make us a success here. Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You might recall, when I ran for this office, I said that homelessness was the biggest problem facing the city of Sacramento, and I remain convinced that I was absolutely correct. It's, it's a pervasive problem and it's an expensive problem. It's not an easy problem to solve, but with Pathways, we have a really unique approach, and this wouldn't be happening if the mayor had not expressed some ability to bring Whole Person Care and the grant and the possibilities that it presents to Sacramento. So I'm very grateful for that because it changed the conversation about how we approach homelessness in Sacramento dramatically. Also, it opened the door to being open, to being able to open our winter triage shelter because if we didn't have services to apply within the shelter, it would just, it would just be winter shelter, but not triage. But amazing things have happened in this facility over the last few months, where we have taken people, and we heard from one tonight, people who have been outdoors a long time, who have a plethora of issues that need to be addressed, as Mr. Foley said, before they're actually ready to be successful in housing. The mayor is absolutely correct that housing is the next pinch point, but at least we've proven at the winter triage shelter that we've got a program that's actually successful in making people re-envision what their life could be like, to stabilize them after being unsafe, unhealthy, uncomfortable, outdoors, and getting them into a place where they envision a life where they would embrace all of those things, where they want to be healthy, where they want to move forward. This is really tough work. I, I got to tell you, my hat is off to all of these people and every aspect of the homeless problem that they, that they work on. It's an ongoing situation, but this goal of getting 2,000 people off the street in the next couple or three years, it's an adventurous goal, but I, I remain convinced that we can achieve it. We have to, because if we don't, our homeless population will increase, and the impacts to the city will increase. It's, it's, you know, it's not comfortable for anybody in Sacramento to see the indigence that we experience on the streets and on the parkway. It's not, there's nothing good about it. So the effort that we make to address these problems for everybody who's fallen into homelessness, and of course, there are a million reasons why that happens, and there are a million problems that keep them there, but if we, if we remain steadfast in this goal, we can, we can, we can achieve it. We can get 2,000 people off the streets, and if we have that kind of significance, we will have demonstrated to the people of this city that our investments have a dramatic payback because there are definitely backend savings. You know, when people live outdoors, they do cost our collective community a lot of money. When you think about all the trips to emergency medical rooms, or to jail, or cleaning up the trash behind the homeless, all of these things are enormously expensive. So we'll be a better-off community and a healthier city altogether if we remain focused on this homeless problem. As you said, Mayor, housing is the next pinch point, and I look forward to the results of this RFI. I know that at least three of the people who responded have pretty adventurous programs about housing, and that's a subject near and dear to me because I've built housing for 35 years here in Sacramento. So I look forward to working on that project. I look forward to helping you fundraise private funds to make this happen. Again, nothing about solving the homeless problem is cheap. It's an investment, but it's a worthwhile investment on numerous levels, and I look forward to, to working with you in the future, Mayor, to, to help solve this.
I know how dedicated you are to this, and I really appreciate it. Just a couple final comments, and then, then we will vote. I want to thank all the funders, and I want to thank the team here as well, many of who I, I know, some I don't know as well personally, but I do know people who dedicate their lives to this field, and what is impressive to me is that I know most of you who work in this field, were working in this field long before there was this kind of hope. And, you know, you, you, and so that makes your work especially heroic, and you get to now enjoy the fruits of having some resources, significant resources, to be able to do more of what you know actually works. And so we're very grateful to you. I have a question for Emily, we're all so grateful too, by the way. How many people have been housed permanently or quasi-permanently through triage and, and Whole Person Care since, and we, by the way, we haven't started yet. This launch is May 1st. All this was, all this was like spring training, like the preliminary, the preliminary stuff, right? The regular season begins May 1st. How many people have we housed?
I would conservatively estimate that today we've housed either in a permanent or transitional program about 50 folks, mostly, almost all exclusively from the shelter. We have another 20 that I know that are on their way, perhaps some more, but because the vast majority came from the shelter, I think that's probably a pretty conservative estimate.
And again, as we ramp up here, we're going to be able to have 1,000 people in the program at a time, correct?
Yes, at a point in time.
The last point I want to make, and it's one that, I'm, I'm sorry that you guys have, like, been a broken record having to say this, but the business community and a lot of the residents affected by homelessness are not here tonight, and that's unfortunate. I wish they, I hope they're watching at home, because I, I wish they heard, I hope they hear this presentation. Well, we should send everybody the videotape here, okay? But one of the things I think is especially important is that while the approach here is to identify the people who need help the most, and then to, then to go do the outreach based on knowing something about them, it's equally important that you try to advertise and actually organize yourselves geographically as much as possible, where there are hotspots, if that's the appropriate word. We had the, these three women who came earlier tonight, who come regularly, by the way, and show us pictures of the underpass, the WX Freeway, and we know there are other places as well, and I know that you're not necessarily identifying people based on geography, you're identifying them based upon their, the number of times they've touched the healthcare system or the public safety system, but somehow you've got to find enough wiggle room here to be able to intersect your approach, which is the right approach, with making some real progress in hotspots throughout our city, because you want the ability, and it's not a lecture, it's all of us, we want the ability to be able to get more- to be able to get more resource, to be able to do more, to help more people, then we have to show the people, the voters of this city, and the people who experience this from a different perspective, that they feel a difference as well. And I know 1,000 at a time is not going to solve the problem, but it might solve a third to a half of the problem, especially given who you're targeting, so please, please, please keep in mind the geographical hotspot imperative here as you're going about this very important and great work. Okay. Jeff, did you have another comment?
I just want to move staff recommendation. Let's let these contracts and keep moving.
Let's go. We've got a second. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, that passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 to nothing. Thank you, guys, very much. Go get them, all right? [applause] Okay.
Make a motion continuing that to the next lady.
We need to make a motion to continue file out of 19, please.
Motion made.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes unanimously. All right, that is the end of our agenda for this evening. We do have council ideas and questions. I've got Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll lead it all for you. I've got three events that are going to happen on Saturday, the 28th. First one, starting with Reimagine Mack Road. It's a day of community impact, and we're inviting you to come out between the hours of 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. You'll be able to help the community center revitalize our neighborhood playgrounds and work together to beautify Mack Road by removing trash and debris. Lunch will be provided for all volunteers. You can contact the community center for more details at area code 916-706-3833. You can also contact my office. And then on the 28th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m., we're going to have the Pocket Green Haven Rodeo. That's right, I said rodeo, but it's not your typical rodeo, it's a bike rodeo. You'll join the Pocket Green Haven Community Association and the Sacramento Police Department at the bike rodeo, and the bike rodeo consists of a series of maneuvers directly related to everyday cycling, including safety, exiting a driveway, how to scan and approach an intersection, and how to avoid road hazards. The rodeo will be held in six 30-minute segments, and you can contact my office if you need more information. Once again, that's at the School of Engineering and Science from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And then the final announcement is Mega Family Expo. It's going to take place at Destiny Church Event Center from 11:00 to 4:00. This is the fifth annual Mega Family Expo, and they'll be having services and entertainment for families, the entire family. They will have sections for infantry, party and entertainment, home and family resources, a marketplace, and a family talent show. That's the Destiny Church in Valley High from 11:00 to 4:00. That concludes my announcements.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you again, Mayor. Couple quick ones here. Hotspots will be happening at Rio Tierra High School this Friday from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and 13- to 19-year-old kids are welcomed. Some of you may have heard about the McKinley Water Vault Project. It's basically a big cistern to assist us with our combined sewer system and sanitary sewer outflows. Some community members have expressed concern, so we're going to take them on a tour of previously-built, successful projects by the Department of Utilities. We will meet Saturday, April 28th, at McKinley Park, specifically at the baseball field at 9:45 a.m. We'll get on the bus. Lunch will be provided. We'll conclude at 12:30 p.m. So I look forward to going on that tour with my constituents and hopefully assuaging their concerns about this rather large public project that will do an awful lot of good for the community. And lastly, we're looking for volunteers for the McKinley Rose Garden Volunteer Pruning Day, also on Saturday, April 28th, from 8:00 till 12:00 p.m., breakfast at 7:30. You don't need to be an expert. We've got people there who are very familiar with roses to help you learn how to prune. And lastly, I'd like to report out on the Governance Ad Hoc Committee. We met actually recently on a Friday, and we have finished our policies for direct reports, and I can't read what Larry wrote about the next item, but suffice to say, the ad hoc committee will continue to work on a focused policy document for the city of Sacramento.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I have board and commission appointments to report to the Active Transportation Commission, Curtis Paulins, Jackie Cole, and Tim Smith.
Again, those will be voted upon next week. All right, if there's nothing more to come before the Sacramento City Council, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.